I want to call to order the Amberly Council Meeting of November 12, 2018. Please call the roll.
Chris Rata?
Here.
Okay, come on in.
Here.
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 And if everyone will please rise and join me in the conference, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First item on the agenda is our minutes from our last meeting, which was the October 8, 2018 meeting. The minutes were circulating in the package. Are there any changes to those minutes? If not...
Did I circulate some changes? Did I send you changes? Yesterday? Well, it wasn't that important.
Do you have a change?
They were editorial and not sent to us, so...
If there are no changes, we can consider the minutes approved. Next item is the finance report for September 2018.
So, the finance report for September 18 for the earnings tax, the village collected $262,000. This is down about 10% from September of 2017's collection of $293,000. So far this year, we've collected $1.9 million. We've collected about 71% of what we had estimated for the year. Our estimate was $2.7 million. The property tax we received during the month of September was a little less than $80,000. This was from the state of Ohio for the second half world debt. We did receive $5,500 from the local government fund. So, our total revenues for the month of September for general fund was $402,000. The revenue estimate for the entire general fund is $4.7 million. We've collected $4,000 of that so far, for about an 84% collection rate through the end of September. On the expense side, the expenses for the month of September, about $450,000, and that brought our year-to-date total of expenses at 3.2. Our budget was 5.1, so we expended almost 62% of the general fund budget. And that leaves us with an unencumbered general fund balance at the end of September of 6.3 million. That concludes my report.
Are there any questions for the man? At this point on the agenda, I would like to achieve one item that he wanted on his question board.
Yeah, thank you. I'm going to stay up here tonight. I just want a better shot on TV. That's a good idea, isn't it, Pat? I, you know, the police department, we're involved in many different things. We have many activities that go on within the police department, from our bike fair to our ice cream social to just normal everyday activities. So, this person's going to be upset with me, but Nancy Raice has gone over and above for this police department for the past number of years. It does so many behind-the-scenes things, and as a department, we've been talking about this over and over, and we wanted a way to be able to bring her to council without her knowing and recognize her and thank her for everything she's done for us. So, sorry, but can you come forward?
I'm down. I have a question.
It's just, each year, we look to give this award away. It's a Citizens Award of Excellence, and this year it's going to be to you. I mean, you do so much for the department, and you really need to be recognized for it. You go over and above in so many different ways, and we truly appreciate you a lot.
Thank you. I love you guys, so...
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Nancy, on behalf of the entire council, thank you for all that you do, for the community, for us.
This is my pleasure, obviously. Thank you.
I just want to add a comment that I've had the pleasure of working with Nancy at several events and witnessed her generosity and hospitality to all the children at the bike fair. She always makes sure to provide the Italian ice that is acceptable to everyone who doesn't eat ice cream, and at the ice cream social and the police levy campaign. I concur with you.
Thank you.
Okay, we will now move on to committee reports, and first is the finance. Thank you, Mayor. First item I have on my agenda is to introduce ordinance number 2018-12, ending appropriations for fiscal year, ending fiscal year 2018. It comes in three pieces. The first item is to appropriate $42,542 in order to purchase exhaust system. This is a result of a grant which was from the FEMA, as for the fire. Second item is to increase appropriations for the police levy, which was originally appropriated from a $80,400 order to reduce additional revenues for wages. We have to increase the appropriations for that, and to increase the appropriation of Southwest Jets. Original appropriations made, $75,000, reset by $1,000. Accordingly, I move that we adopt ordinance 2018-12, amending appropriations for fiscal year 2018.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance 2018-12, amending the appropriations for fiscal year 2018. Are there any questions or comments? Just a couple of things. On the firehouse exhaust, that will be the expenditure of the funds that will be covered in the police report that is coming up. And on the appropriations for the jets, again, that's good news, that we have to amend those because that means we're getting additional revenues, and all we're really doing is providing the, bringing the funds that we collect for security and accountability, and this allows us to expend funds. So, I think overall, these amendments are all good news in that, you know, for the... Any other questions or comments? If not, it is to move and seconded that we approve ordinance 2018-12, amending the appropriations for fiscal year 2018. Please call the roll.
Chris Rata?
Yes.
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 The other item I propose is the renewal of the Open Gov Software Services Agreement with any cost of $2,000 per year. This is a renewal of the contract for an additional period of up to five years with a same amount that we have been occurring for the last three years, a way of showing to the public what we are doing fiscally, and just a good positive commitment to the rest. Accordingly, I move that we adopt resolution 2018-25, excuse me, resolution authorizing the village manager to renew the contract, Open Gov, to access to public records.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt resolution 2018-25, authorizing a renewal of the agreement with Open Gov. Are there any questions or comments? The one thing I want to point out is that any new use to the Open Gov software, their fee would be $3,570, so we're getting a price of 44% fiscal. Any other questions or comments? If not, it is to move and seconded that we adopt resolution 2018-25, authorizing the renewal of the software. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? It noted that the resolution passed as you announced. That concludes my reports for the findings. And I will recognize you for your report on the investment. Thank you, Mayor. On October 17, the Investment Committee met to review our investment philosophy with one of our investment advisor, PNC, and view the great forecast in our history as far as how we have looked, how our yields have increased over the period of last year. A year ago, our average yield of our portfolio was 1.2%. A year later, we are up to 1.965%, so virtually an increase in test 1% of our portfolio deals, less than 66% increase from a year ago. The average portfolio is still, just slightly over one year, so we're not putting ourselves in a risk situation. Projections are that the rates will increase slightly the coming year, so maybe at this point, I'd like to report from the Investment Committee, our yields should be around 2.7%. That concludes my report. Are there any questions regarding the investment? Okay, if not, we will move on to the police department.
Thank you. The committee met on October 30 to deal with a number of items, specifically several purchases, the first being the exhaust system for the firehouse that was previously mentioned. This is important for firefighters because there's a lot of diesel exhaust that is given off when the trucks are started up and when they are brought back into the station. And the current system does not meet the standards of the NFPA, National Fire, something, I can't remember what that is. So, this, and this exhaust removal system was listed as a high priority item on the FEMA Assistance to Firefighters Federal Fire Grant List, and the Amberly Village Fire Department applied for this grant at the end of 2017 and was granted the $42,542 award on August 10. At the meeting, we saw a video of how it works. It's very efficient. The hose is, it connects to the truck via, it's magnetized, so it just goes right on, goes right off, and when they come in and out, and it can operate, can work on several of our vehicles, and it removes 100% of the exhaust. So, I move that we adopt resolution 2018-26, authorizing the village manager to purchase firehouse exhausts.
Second. Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt resolution 2018-26, authorizing the village manager to purchase the firehouse exhausts. Are there any questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt resolution 2018-26. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? It noted that the resolution passed as you announced.
The next item also concerns a grant item, actually, to replace outdated, expired fire gloves and fire hoods, and to replace an 18-year-old washing machine that has reached the end of its lifespan. These items have been at the forefront of our equipment that needed to be replaced, and they are also a high priority with the Bureau of Workers' Compensation within their grant guidelines. The village requested and received a quote following the Bureau of Worker Compensation Guidelines from Vogtle Pool Fire Equipment for Gloves, Hoods, and Washing Machine, and prior to the grant application. The grant was accepted and awarded to Amberly on August 10, 2018, in the amount of $10,675. There is a requirement that the village must match a portion, which comes to $2,135. So, they have forwarded the grant to Amberly, and the remaining will come out of the general fund. So, accordingly, I move that we adopt resolution 2018-27, authorizing the village manager to purchase gloves, hoods, and a washer for the fire department.
Second. Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt resolution 2018-27, authorizing the village manager to purchase gloves, hoods, and washer for the fire. Are there any questions or comments?
I'll just add that these are essential items that are used daily.
If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt resolution 2018-27. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? It noted that the resolution passed as you announced.
Okay, and then the third item concerns a voice recording system for police dispatch. The current, the current equipment no longer meets the needs and is out of date. It's approximately 14 years old and is no longer compatible with our new voice-over-internet protocol phone systems. It's beyond its useful life. Dispatchers need access to recorded calls to instantly playback phone calls and radio traffic, which the current system does not support. The village has shopped this system and is recommending the purchase of a Revboard voice recorder system from Stephen Campbell and Associates in the amount of $9,739. This system will put all radio and phone traffic on one recording medium that will allow dispatch to make chronological recordings of the events. The vendor for this purchase is the same vendor as in the past, and installation of the new recording system will take one full day. They will remove the existing system and install the new one. This purchase is being made from the village's PSAP 911 Fund, which had a $22,000 balance as of... So, I move that we adopt resolution 2018-28, authorizing the village manager to purchase a voice recording system for police dispatch.
Second. Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt resolution 2018-28, authorizing the village manager to purchase a voice recording system for police dispatch. Are there any questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt resolution 2018-28. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? It noted that the resolution passed as you announced.
Okay, and the final item concerns a mitigation plan, Hamilton County Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan. This is something that trickles down from FEMA at the federal level. In order to receive faster aid, every community has to have a mitigation plan that covers various things. We, this is a renewal of something we've done in the past. It's been updated. Our, our police, our public safety department works for the county on this, so it's something we want to keep up to date. I move that we adopt resolution 2018-29, adopting the Hamilton County Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Second. Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt resolution 2018-29, adopting the Hamilton County Natural Hazard Mitigation. Are there any questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt resolution 2018-29. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? It noted that the resolution passed as you announced.
And that concludes my report.
And the one thing I would add is that, again, I think this police and fire report highlights the great success of, not just in the police and fire, but that the village is having, getting grants to specially address, you know, in this case, this is equipment that is critically needed, and we're able to get grants to pay for, for these things and avoid the use of funds from our general fund. On both the administration side and police and fire side, congratulations and thank you for your work. We'll now move on to the streets, public utilities, and sewer street. I believe that is being reported on by Asprey Martin.
Resolution 2018-30 authorizes truck engine and brake repair for the 2009 International Dump Truck. The maintenance department utilizes the 2009 International Dump Truck as one of four trucks that perform various operations, deliver services in the community such as leaf collection, brush collection, hauling asphalt, asphalt, and salt. Snow fighting is a main function of this truck during the four months of winter weather. With that being one of its main jobs, this truck has spent many hours driving in snowstorms, plowing, and spreading salt on the roadways. I understand that salt is corrosive to most types of medical metals. Trucks used for this purpose experience faster deterioration, which is the main cause of the need to repairs to the truck's rear brake system and, in fact, cylinder head. To repair the brake system and engine, the estimate is $19,617.33. Via plus meter service, the village has utilized this international truck dealership for many years and has received cost-efficient satisfactory services. With winter coming, there's a need to repair the truck to be ready for snow and ice removal operations. This truck is scheduled to be replaced in the 2019 budget. Unfortunately, this is a significant amount of money to put into a vehicle that is due to be replaced. They have considered other options, however, new and/or used vehicles are not readily available. By way of example, the new dump truck that village council authorized in March 2018 will likely not be available until January, February 2019, nearly an 11-month turnaround. So, I move to adopt resolution 2018-30, authorizing the village manager to complete repairs to the 2009 International Dump.
Second. Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt resolution 2018-30, authorizing the village manager to complete repairs to the dump truck. Are there any questions or comments? As I understand it, there are four trucks, our fleet, for snow removal, leaf pickup, the one which is heating and repaired, the one which is scheduled for replacement in early next year, so if two trucks go down, we'd be in the role of her for snowing. This comes at a fortunately opportune period of time, but it's necessary. Are there any other questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt resolution 2018-30, authorizing the village manager to complete repairs to the dump truck. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? It noted that the resolution passed as you announced.
That concludes my report.
Okay, now move on to the compensation and benefits.
Thank you, Mr. Fair. The Compensation and Benefits Committee met on October 30 to have our annual discussion about employee gifts for the holidays, our gift card program that we've been doing for several years now, providing that employees, as a holiday gift, will receive $250 either gift cards, or they can take cash in lieu of gift cards. And we had a discussion that we certainly wish to continue to thank our employees for their awesome service to the village, and that we wish to certainly wish them happy holidays with a gift from the village. And so, once again, the committee recommended $250 gift cards for all of our employees. We need a motion from council. There's not a resolution. We just need a motion. So, I'll move that we approve the holiday gift card for employees in the amount of $250, or gift cards or cash in lieu of gift cards in the amount of $250. Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we give the manager authority to grant to employees a gift card or cash of $250 for the holidays. Are there any questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we give the manager the authority to grant to employees a $250 gift card. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? It noted that the motion passed as you announced.
And the rest of the compensation and benefits will come, I believe, from the mayor later, so that is the, the rest of the discussion that was not in the committee, that's for all of council, will come later, so that includes my report from the committee.
Okay. Now move on to the committees.
Thank you, Mayor. The next item in your packet is resolution 2018-31, referring changes to the village code pertaining to accessory uses. I refer this to the planning commission. So, let me provide a little bit of background here on this issue. In early 2017, the planning commission staff began reviewing several sections of the village zoning code to better clarify the intent. We were to recommend changes to bring codes up to date, and that also included the property maintenance code change. And at the recommendation at the Zoning Board of Appeals and eventually the Law Committee, the village council at its last month meeting approved a six-month moratorium related to the construction of certain accessory structures over 200 square feet. So, the moratorium took effect on October 8, when you took the action, passed the, passed the resolution, passed the ordinance, and it was designed to provide time for staff, planning commission, and village council to work through this process and to identify and study the issue and come up with alternatives for the planning commission and ultimately village council to consider implementing in our code that would regulate accessory uses over, over 200 feet. So, the process from a staff standpoint, after council adopted the moratorium, was to survey other communities to find out what other types of regulations are in place that we ourselves do not have in our, in our code. So, that was the first thing that occurred, and we ended up getting information from about 14 different jurisdictions, looking at their zoning codes, and drilling down into it to see what types of regulations they're applying when there is an accessory use like this. So, that information gave us a peek at what are the communities are doing, and the timing on this worked out in such a way that at the November 5 planning commission meeting, we had the opportunity to talk with them about what we had surveyed and to share that information with them, and to glean from them what kind of additional regulations would they like to see incorporated into the zoning code as it relates to accessory structure. So, that survey information was presented to the planning commission. We had a discussion at the planning commission. It was a public meeting. It was not a public hearing. So, our process for addressing this issue is for council to refer an ordinance back to the planning commission to consider. So, that is the step that we are at at this point. So, before you tonight is resolution 2018-31, which refers an ordinance to the planning commission to consider. The ordinance itself tries to capture the majority of the, of the comments that the planning commission had this, this past month as it relates to accessory structure. It is, the, the intent is to get it in this type of format so that it goes to the count, it goes to the planning commission, and they have an opportunity at their December 3 meeting to hold a public hearing as well as spend time discussing it, and then ultimately recommending an ordinance that will come back to this body. I would expect when the, when this ordinance comes back to village council, it will look different than what it currently exists at, at this point in time. So, what you're being asked tonight to do is to take this action so that we can then hold this public hearing on, on December 3, and then ultimately, we will get something back from the planning commission. Theoretically, the planning commission could take 60 days to bring something, send something back to council, but we anticipate since we have the opportunity to talk to them at the November planning commission, that we should be able to work through these issues, and staff and Kevin have been working diligently trying to put this stuff together. So, the next step for us would be to adopt this ordinance, excuse me, adopt this resolution this evening and refer it to the planning commission. We'll just point out that when it does come back to the council, we could potentially have a first reading on December, the December 12 meeting, 14th? December 10, thank you. The December 10 meeting, but we will not hold a public hearing on it for council until the January, January 14 council. That's when we'd hold our public hearing and see if it comes. That's assuming the planning commission takes action at their December 3 meeting, referring back to, back to the council. At this point in time, the motion is in order to refer resolution 2018-13 to the planning commission.
We hereby move that we adopt resolution 2018-31, referring changes to the zoning code regulations on accessory structures back to the planning commission.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt resolution 2018-31, referring changes to the zoning code regulations to the planning commission. Again, just to reiterate, what we're really approving tonight is that we, as council, agree with the process that we're doing, and that the, that we really want the planning commission to come up with, with an ordinance to, to make those changes. The details that are in the draft ordinance, as the village manager said, are going to change. There is the draft ordinance that the staff has put together. If council members, as they look... If council members, as they look through it, have questions for the manager, please feel free to submit those questions to the manager, and they can work through those in the process. As council considers the ordinance after it comes back from the planning commission, we will, we will hold a law committee meeting in addition to the council meetings, and as the village manager mentioned, there will also be another public hearing as part of our council process. So, it's the same thing we went through when we went through a few years ago now, but the North Side Village where the planning commission held a public hearing, and we will hold a second public hearing to hear input from the community.
Does, I'm sorry if you said this, but I'm not familiar with this process. Does the planning commission hold its public hearing after we finalize ordinance, or is theirs going to be on December 3? Did you say that? I'm sorry.
The planning commission will hold their public hearing on December 3, so we will advertise that and encourage residents to provide public input. So, once they have their public hearing, we will have discussion about what they want in that ordinance, and then they will send that back to council. And then you will have your public hearing after that. Do you be able to make changes even after the planning commission has made modifications?
Realistically, it doesn't, it's September 10th, 3rd.
No, you cannot, the only thing you could do on December 10th would have a first reading. You're not going to have any public discussion of it. But that enables us to advertise it and get more publicity on it so that at the January 14th meeting, we can have the public hearing and seek public him.
Are there any other questions or comments? If not, it has been moved in second that we adopt Resolution 2018-31, referring changes to the zoning code regulations to the planning commission. Please, excuse me. All in favor?
Aye.
Both. It noted that the resolution passed.
Thank you. The next item is the village manager's report, and I have three items I wanted to point out. You may recall that on Saturday, October 20th, there was a pretty significant rain and windstorm that brought quite a few tree loans down. That occurred in the period when we had suspended brush collection. Because of the significance of the brush, we initiated a two-week special brush up, a brush pickup period. And I just want to share with you how significant that was. We ended up collecting 125 yards of wood chips. So, 125 yards in the entire month of October, we took, we picked up 145. So, in that two-week period, we picked up a significant amount of brush, so about 82% of what we had done for the month. And just another comparison of that, when you compare that number to what occurred in the month of September for our regular collective for the entire month, it was about 82%. So, that, that windstorm was quite significant for us, and we did hear a lot of compliments from residents about the ability to put that storm damage out to the street. We are now back to collecting leaves, and so we will be posting the black and white signs in neighborhoods, alerting residents approximately times from when we will be picking up their leaves. But the village continues to strive to pick leaves up at least once a week, but once we get into that heavy drop season and we are nearly there, we will not be able to continue that schedule, but your leaves will continue to be picked up. So, we just encourage residents to continue putting leaves at the, at the park. Included in the council package tonight was the 2016 and 2017 financial audit. So, this is a process whereby the village gets audited every two years, and so we just received our audit last, last week, and so the state auditor released that. It is available for any residents to view online. There was a, there were two issues noted in the, in the audit, there was a minor reclassification issue that relates to our annual report. We turn in an annual report usually late January, February, and there were two areas there where the state believed that we should have classified the information different. It didn't change the outcome of our finances in any manner, but it, that was a modification that they had recommended we put into place, so we have done that. And then the second item is that we actually did a transfer of unclaimed funds, actually did that in January when it should have occurred in December of 2015. So, we did it in January 16, and it should have occurred in December of 2015. So, the, there is a note in the audit in regards to that. Other than that, the village is pleased with the, with the audit. And the last item I wanted to mention is the continuing communication we've had in regards to the 911 transfer to Hamilton County. That process has continued as the police and fire committee has led that charge and we've communicated that to the residents. We anticipate that that will be a seamless process on November 19th, that will switch over to Hamilton County 911. As we've stated before, it's good for the village, it's, it's actually a benefit, especially for those who are experiencing medical call issues. We believe it will improve there, and it also allows our dispatchers to be freed up to take care of our village business instead of taking care of 911 calls that are outside of our area that we're having to transfer to another. So, just wanted to let council know that we are moving forward with that, and residents should not notice any kind of a difference with the transfer to 911. And that concludes.
Are there any questions for the committees?
Just a comment, and I wanted to commend the entire village for adding the additional brush pickup day, which from, I was out of town at the time of this storm, but I was following on Nextdoor, and I noticed a lot of residents were asking for it, and your response to that really was great to add on, and I'm thinking it was a fair request.
And I was shocked, I have to say, I was shocked. It wasn't you that got booked.
You know what? I was really delighted because it, it just is an example of how great our community is at this thing to residents.
Well, I would offer two comments on that. Tony Chesney was called in the day of the storm, and he immediately texted me and said, "We have to pick brush up." So, that was, that was on Saturday night. And then the, the second comment that I would offer is that with leaf fall this year, it was perfect timing, it was the perfect storm for us to get because we were able to switch gears with leaf collection because leaf collection has been, has not been like it would normally be during this time. And so, that enabled the village to switch over to the brush dipping. So, those were the two factors that really drove that decision. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? If not, we'll move on to the chief's report.
I just have a couple of emails. First one I want to talk about is the Pittsburgh shooting, what kind of impact that's had on us as a police department as a whole. We've been working directly with Safe Cincinnati, attending a lot of meetings, you know, not only here, but with the city of Cincinnati, just to make sure that if something like that occurs, we're well prepared for an incident like that. Obviously, it's going to require a lot of collaboration between not only Amberly but Cincinnati and other surrounding jurisdictions, and we're working on that. We have, they've increased the number of safety details, patrol details at all the temples, and I'll commend the department. I've got a large number of emails and phone calls from people thanking the department for stepping up, and that's been a great thing.
Chief, I think there are, if you just, I mean, we, we know, but for residents that might be watching and don't know what Safe Cincinnati is, if you could just read it.
Yeah. Safe Cincinnati is an organization put together about five years ago, and they were designed to provide safety and security to all Jewish facilities in Hamilton County in this region. There's actually, I believe, if I get this right, 35 directors, and there's one in Cincinnati, and it's Ken Wall, currently, previously was Mark Dowd. So, they work directly with all the other Jewish centers and areas throughout, trying to come up with different ideas, plans. And as you've seen over the years, they've put in, you know, boulders and cameras and just continuing to increase the security and the use of police officers. So, that's their primary function, and they're funded through, you know, I believe it's Federation.
Federation.
Yeah. It's a, it's been a great organization, they do a great job, and they're really good to work with. The, the next thing is, is in the near future, I don't know if it's going to be the next council meeting, but we have two officers that I've been waiting to recognize for a life-saving duty that they did, you know, six or eight months back. I was kind of waiting for certain award pens to come in, but over the weekend, there was another officer that was dispatched to Iran, a 42-year-old female that collapsed and had a massive heart attack and died. The officer was able to defibrillate her multiple times and brought her back. So, that's another, you know, nice life-saving heroic effort by one of the officers in the quick response, how much that really makes a difference. The last thing is, is the menorah lighting this year, we're going to have here again at village hall. It'll be on December 2nd. It'll be at 4:00 p.m. Any residents, council, or anyone else that would like to attend, I think this is a, this is a good opportunity. I would love if we could end up having to move this outside because we're too crowded. I think this is an opportunity for the Jewish community and the community in general and people all around the world to, you know, come together, you know, with the recent shootings and all the different things that have been happening, not only in Pittsburgh and St., and Louisville and everywhere else. And that concludes my report.
Can we make sure to invite all of the residents in Amberly to menorah lighting this year? Just get the word out for every, that everybody, not just for Jewish people.
I'll get, I'll get the information together, and I'll get with Nicole, we'll get that blasted out on social media and email, as well as I'll get with each Jewish facility and see if they'll put it out, as well as if we get the Jewish center to put it out, I think that would help.
Any other questions or comments for the chief?
Now, we'll move on to the mayor's report. First, with respect to the environmental stewardship committee, the next meeting is November 26th, Monday evening at normal time, 7 o'clock, down in the community room. The, I think I commented on the last meeting, in fact, I think maybe at the last meeting, we approved the resolution with respect to no idling. The signage that we've received from the wheat fry Hamilton County community has been placed at the, our three locations here in Amberly. Number one here at village hall, number two down in Amberly Green, and number three down at the parking lot football field. And then last, with respect to environmental stewardship committee, again, I want to keep stressing because it is an event that people do value, our one-stop swap for 2019 will be April 7, and that will be again from noon to 4. The expectation is that we will be doing the same type of pickups, it'll be electronics, it'll be safe paper shredding. We will have goodwill again this year, and you also have scrapping up or scrap canning or whatever it's called.
Scrubbing up.
Sorry.
Why do you sound so disdainful? I'm surprised.
It is my sister-in-law.
You might sound like...
Sorry, I apologize. It seemed, seemed to say for this, it was not meant to be.
It was.
And then the only other thing I wanted to do on, on the mayor's report, I'll cover when we go past new business. So, that concludes my mayor's report. Any new business?
So, we, I received, and I think all of, all of council received, an email from a resident who had an issue with, I didn't really have a good response to the issue, but the tag end of his email, at least that came to me, said, "I wish there was a way to email all council members with just one click." And I know this has come up before, and I feel his frustration in having to send seven different emails and then perhaps also one to, to the manager. And just also in my own experience, having sent an email to the city of Cincinnati, council member, I had the capability on whatever system they used to, with one click, send all council members. And I, I know that we've discussed it before, and I'm hoping that we get this upgrade because it just seems so unwieldy and so old-fashioned not to be able to take care of that one message all at one time.
We do have some limitations on the software that we have, but we'll follow.
I mean, it, the limitation is, I think, on EGA. But I think most, most, if not all, council members have their emails listed on our website. So, someone could send a, just a regular email to all council members and not use EGA.
They could, but it was, I don't know, I seem to get most, I seem to get most communications from residents via EGA.
Right.
So, that, they definitely, residents are using our website, and they're, so therefore using the EGA system.
Okay. Any other new business? If not, you know, we're, we're at the point in the year where, I think this is the fourth or fifth year, and we have gone through the process of doing the evaluation of the manager, and we're at the same point this year. So, I would hereby like to make a motion to adjourn into executive session to consider the employment and compensation of our village manager for the period, and the review will be for the period of October 2017 to September 2018.
Second.
Okay. It moved in second that we adjourn into executive session to consider the employment and compensation of the village manager. Please call the roll with respect to the mayor's report.
Ms. Schreiber?
Yes.
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 Yes. So, having noted that we are adjourned into executive session at 7:17, and for those present here at the conclusion of our executive session, we will come back into general session, but it will be pretty much just to adjourn the meeting. So, you know, you're welcome to say, but there, there won't be much when we come back. So, thank you again for meeting.